So while waiting for my colleagues to come to the table, could I ask Mr. Hare, Mr. Clay Hare, if you have any good jokes?
I have some lawyer jokes, but they're not appropriate for this audience.
I got Mr. McAlvin. Yeah, West, yes.
All right, board members, please come to the table. We're ready to go.
Thank you, thank you. Now, we have an audit work plan, a FYI 18 risk assessment and audit plan. The Audit Committee Chair, Ms. Heinz, did ask me to manage this personal discussion today because she was tied up at her school today. So with that, since we had presentation of the audit proposed FYI 2018 audit plan at the board meeting last week, let me ask my board members if you have any questions to ask on the proposal, please do that. And then after we are done with all the question and answers, I'll take a comment from the board members. And if you have any other suggestion on the proposed plan, any amendment you are thinking about doing, please let us know. So any questions from board members? No one? Wow. Then I'll come up with one. I know, I'm just giving other board members some time to think about the questions they may want to ask. That I think somewhere in the, in the audit plan, proposed audit plan mentions audit technology. That I have a recollection about having that discussion at a Audit Committee meeting about a year and a half ago. Teresa probably have a better recollection than I do. Could you tell us where we are with that piece of audit technology?
Yeah, maybe I can start, and then Teresa, you can complement on what else that we can add to it. So, Mr. Moon, about the audit technology, there are two aspects of it. And the first aspect, you are very absolutely right, that last year, we discussed about the procuring of a audit management software. So meaning that, that in addition to use, just use Microsoft Word and Excel to document the audit findings and what we have done, we would like to use a more robust and like a more methodological manner to procure a software that we can do our testing and our selection in a more, you know, systematically way. And also the way to generate report, because it is really our goal to produce a very professional, world-class look report. So if with the help of the audit management software, it can help me to generate more systematic, professional report as well. So that is one. And that has been approved last year at the board level, I believe, $139,000 for a five years of implementation has been approved. That's the first aspect. The second aspect is that, that we have procured one license to use something called IDEA, I-D-A-E-A, which is very similar to ACL. So meaning that it will help us as the auditors to make smarter choices of sample. Meaning that, that this is like a software that can identify some outliers, so that we can, it can help us to do more target and better target audit sampling. So that is the second aspect.
Second aspect has not been funded by the school board? Is that in the budget while you're asking for that, or?
It's funded already, and it has already been ongoing, the idea of the second aspect. The first aspect, it has not. It has been approved, but the actions have not been completed yet. You have anything else to ask, Teresa?
Do you need additional information regarding the history, or are we good?
Anything you might want to add?
The original software that we were looking to procure during all of the transition and the changes that were taking place, we put that on hold because the original RFP looked like it was looking for something more than what we needed. And we wanted to wait until the new AG came on board to make sure we got something that was what the office needed and not necessarily above and beyond our needs, which is why it was put on hold. But we are moving forward with what was approved when, based on your recollection, about a year and a half ago.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other board member? Yes, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
As I mentioned on Thursday night, I am just so thrilled with this draft plan. You guys have made substantial progress over where we were a year ago on this. I do have a couple of questions. One is regarding the healthcare eligibility audit. When we teed this up a little over a year ago, there was a lot of conversation. You all proceeded down that path of doing an eligibility audit and then kind of pulled back because there was a concern over the size of the pool. Have we resolved all those concerns about the ability to do this audit with an outside vendor, or are you planning on doing it in-house now?
Yeah, yeah. So what we have done is we have looked at the eligibility of the, of the people group who have signed up for the healthcare eligibility test, that we can totally do in-house. As a matter of fact, we are closing, we are almost closing that audit, and we will be presenting at the Audit Committee meeting at the end of this month. But what you're describing, I think it may be the earlier discussion, maybe Teresa, you can help us to field in the background.
It is the earlier discussion. And at that point, it was a broader audit?
At, at the time that the eligibility audit commenced, we split the health claims audit into two portions, claims and eligibility. The claims audit was put on hold. In terms of where it stands with the contractual issues and things like that, I don't know. That was something that HR was looking into. That is on the horizon, I think. I have to go back through and look at the audit horizon here. Go for it.
It's under the secondary horizon, like the claims payment component. But what we have completed is the eligibility component that FCPS, OAG can check that in-house, and that component is going to be done by the end of this month.
Excellent. And on the second point I just wanted to raise is regarding the facilities maintenance audit. I think this is a welcome addition to the audit plan because as we, people don't necessarily see the linkage between our CIP and facilities maintenance. And if we prolong or delay maintenance on our facilities, which we did quite a bit during the economic downturn, it's the old adage, you either pay now or pay later. And when you're paying later, you're probably going to be paying a lot more. And so I welcome this work here. I hope that it will be done in a manner that can influence the CIP as well. So if you have any comments on that, that'd be great. And then the final comment is most of the risk in this plan today is focused on financial risk. But I would urge that you also keep in mind that there are reputational risks that the system has if we don't do things in the right manner. And so I welcome what you're doing here.
Okay, Mrs. Rose?
Thank you. Overall, I think this plan looks great, and I appreciate the work and the detailed information. And I also like the presentation of it as well. So I appreciate that. In the facilities maintenance, as Ms. Corbett Sanders has said, we struggled for years in underfunding preventive maintenance. So I guess that's my question, in this audit, how much information do you think you will be able to report back regarding preventive maintenance?
So, thank you for the question. So back in 2012, I believe, there was a facilities maintenance audit performed by an outside vendor. I believe it's called FEA, Facilities Engineering Associates. So they have done a very detailed report. As you can tell, they are the expert in the industry. So they identified that while our FTS team has done an excellent job in maintaining the structure as to what they can do, but they also revealed that the fact that, that our staff is totally very understaffed. And also, we are behind in the capital cycle for repairments and also the regular maintenance of the facilities. I do know that, that the board will be interested to ensure, right, all of us, including the students and the teachers, are working in a safe and comfortable environment. And that's why we would like to pull that back up to be on the audit plan, because five years have passed by. And as to the major focus, that maybe we can flip actually to the, to the plan on page six. So, is it page six? Yes. Page six, under number three. So the focus will be on to assess the design and the effectiveness of internal controls in place first, to ensure that, that, you know, if there are any balances and checks, that we can make sure that is done properly and make sure that, that we are comply with the laws and regulation and FCPS policies and procedures. So we will also check whether the preventative maintenance work orders and perform an independent physical verifications on sampled facilities maintenance projects. So we would like to bring this back to the board after it is done. We anticipate to spend roughly five months, because this is a pretty long process. I'm sure we all want us to do a deep dive job, right, rather than come back to tell you something at the surface. So we would like to look into it for five months. And then the preliminary scope is in the plan, but we definitely would like to refine that further when the times comes. Anything? Okay.
Okay, so you're going to build on the 2012 piece and basically bring it forward and then give us the status on, on all of that. The other question I had is on the cybersecurity. You're going to work with an outside vendor. Can you give me a little more, because this is something we've talked about for a while, a little more detail on how you're going to do that?
Sure. And here is another exciting news I want to bring back is that that is also done, actually, done, done. Because we're going to come back to present to the Audit Committee the end of this month. Cybersecurity, we divided into two phases. Phase one is more looking at the controls that we have internally at FCPS according to the industry standard. That audit has already been presented, I believe, before my appointment. Then the second piece is looking at the external vulnerability study, meaning that if someone from outside need to attack to our system, what is the likelihood that they can do it? So that study has also been completed. So both topics are carryforward topics from FYI 17. And then for the second phase, we will be presenting to the Audit Committee members in a closed session by the end of this month, the result.
That's great. So we will be seeing it before the end of the year.
Right, definitely.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Any other board member with a question? Ms. Evans?
Thank you very much. This is an excellent plan, and I very much appreciate the detail that you've given us. Just a couple of quick questions on the private transportation piece. I just want to make sure I understand what it is that we're doing. I'm looking at page seven of the, of the plan. So the 4.1 million, that's total that we use on all these things, but the two-point, could you explain to me the difference between the 4.1 and the 2.8 million? 2.8 million, 4.1 includes what we do? Is that, is that the difference?
Yes, exactly. So maybe let me explain again. So the, to clarify it, so the 4.1 million is the total expenditure that FCPS spend on related expenditure, so including the FCPS portion and also the outside vendor portion. And then the 2.8 million is only the outside contractor portion.
So we're basically talking, are we talking mainly about taxis? Is that the, the primary outside vendor that we would be looking at there?
I believe so, but I have not drilled down into the what makeup of the 2.8 million yet. But I suspect is the taxi and other means of transportation that we have to contract with.
For special needs or different placement for students going to private schools or other services that are needed, so it's other than bus transportation, not to include field trips and athletics and things like that.
Okay. One of the things that has come up in the past is whether we could combine with the county. The county has various different special transportation, and we, we've made some inroads in that, you know, with the connector. One of the things that has come up time and time again, and we've never really gotten very far, is to, to use FastTran. You know, that's, that's something that the county uses. And I've never really gotten a satisfactory answer on why we can't combine with the county to use FastTran for the special, these special needs. So anyway, I would hope that that would be one of the things that you would consider looking at.
Sure. I definitely can reach out to the county internal audit department and then to see, get more insights about what county is using and use it as a benchmark, right, when we consider what FCPS to do the same, to serve the same purpose.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. George?
So first, I want to compliment, and she may not have seen my head nodding in the corner, but Ms. Corbett Sanders, who very accurately described the construction concerns around delays. And, you know, it's not pay now or pay later, it's pay now or pay a lot more later. So I was vigor, I was vigorously agreeing with you on that. One of my main concerns, and it's potentially because of my, my professional background, can we go to the next slide, please? The next page? And I, number nine? Page eight, number nine? Just fading. On the procurement and contracts oversight. And the question of how it's phrased here, it sounds like there's only the potential of looking at a segment, because it refers to the 100 million and the top 30 non-construction related, and then particularly pulls out IT, food and nutrition, and instructional services. Is the intent of the five-month engagement to look at the procurement and contracting process and the authorization process and the competitive nature of the process to a certain dollar level? Or are you looking in only a particular, these particular areas? Could you just be a little bit more descriptive for me? Because frankly, you know, we're either people, you know, human, you know, human capital, or stuff, you know? And stuff is, you know, chairs and books and, you know, services and taxis, as Ms. Evans referenced, and computers. So if it's not human capital, it's, you know, the, the acquisition of things and services. So can you just be a little bit more narrative in your description here?
Sure. And this is one of the topic that I, I believe, like, not only financially, but also reputationally, that, that we have some exposure, you know? Everyone has interest looking at how do we actually procure with our money. So to answer Ms. Shou's question, this is more intended to look at the overall process this year, and it include everything. So I do put down the major user department here, not in a particular order, but with IT, food and nutrition, facilities, as well as instructional services. The first sentence, when I quote the dollar amount, and then the purpose of it is to give the board members and the readers of this to get some kind of like financial understanding of how much money we are talking about. I don't have an intention to, you know, exclude certain topics not to be inside. But at the same time, I would like to make sure we do a good job, so that I want it to be very focused. This year, I would like to start off looking at the process itself. So mainly, I will be working with the procurement services team under financial services to look at what are the controls and check and balances that they have. And in the future years, I really would like to focus on specific contracts, you know, because some of our contracts is huge, and it involves different departments and users. So as the second phase, that's why I put it under the secondary audit priority. I have one line called a specific contract audit. So at that point, I really want to look at, you know, for the specific user department, what are your roles and responsibilities? Are you accountable to your roles and responsibilities in those areas? As far as I know, the contract monitoring piece mainly resided with the user department, because they are the one that who know the contract, they know what is going on. So that component likely it will be a phase two, meaning like, in the upcoming year, we will be focused on that. But for FYI 18, we'll be focusing on the overall structure mainly.
So the reason I ask this, I mean, so I did senior contract management, negotiation, contracts oversight for Fortune 200 companies. So I, you know, this is an area of specialty that, that I personally and professionally have. The, the thing that concerns me, and that I hope that you will include, because this is, you know, this is one paragraph, so it's hard. And, and we haven't had, since you've come on board, we haven't had our, we have an upcoming individual meeting. The question of the extensions, contract extensions, and I will tell you that I think this whole board sometimes has been aghast where we've asked for, you know, particular things like memorandum of understanding with the county that's 35 years old and nobody has a copy of. It doesn't exist. And, you know, I sit here drop-jawed in terms of, you know, the accountability of who's adhering to what terms that people think are in place when we reference, you know, relationships, money, and access and acquisition of facilities, instructional services, technology, and certainly food. So I, I hope that not only the initial life cycle of a contract, but the seemingly endless continuations without any kind of a barrier, and that the recommendation that will result at the end of five months to us will be pretty comprehensive in terms of the dollar values that need to start coming to the board for review, so we understand where the obligations are. I mean, we basically in a week are going to obligate ourselves to upwards of, you know, $800,000 more, and I don't know where it's going to come from. So understanding where the money outlay is, not just today in today's budget, but the continuing obligations and what's truly obligated by the board in terms of encumbered versus an obligation that we can get out of when we get to year end and unencumber the system from future obligations when we decide that we have a different set of priorities, is what I hope comes at the end of these recommendations. And then in terms of Ms. Evans' question regarding the transportation, I didn't see and hear a potential suggestion for the outsourcing of services. I don't know if the intention is at the end, you know, with the $4.1 million in transportation services, that which we outsource versus what we do versus what we collaborate with the county on. But as an overall, the potential to, again, unencumber the system from long-term obligations with Virginia Retirement System by potentially taking service-oriented positions like food service, transportation, lawn maintenance, and doing competitive bidding and getting it into the private marketplace, improving competition, creating jobs, and unencumbering the system from long-term obligations that we're, you know, $400 million of our budget goes right out the door to retirement expenses. So, you know, I don't know if that's maybe an overall goal or overarching goal later, but I just want to plant the seed of thinking as you're looking at these certain areas in the audit plan, that the potential exists not for just saving us on security risks or financial risks, but long-term financial gain if we choose to do something different at the end.
Are you asking anybody to respond to that, comment?
Maybe I can comment on the procurement one. So I'm with you, like you too, like for my past life, procurement is something that hold very dear to my heart, because I have been sitting in room with Inspector General and General Counsel and my counsel in front of me, talking about some sensitive thing that, that has big, big dollar amount attached to it. So I definitely see the need. So I can promise you that, that this is, will be something that I would like to look very closely into and provide recommendations to the board as well, like about the funding, right? How are we going to use the funding? The type of contractual mechanism that we use to, maybe I'm able to provide some suggestions, you know? I know that we have a very capable procurement service team, but I think at the same time, it may be good from, for someone who look like, who do not like do the day to the day, and then to have a clear eyes to look at them. So that will be something that we will be focused on.
Mr. Narcofex?
Thank you. And I, I do appreciate and support Mrs. Schultz advocacy, and I strongly support the language in here, so I look forward to what we see in a few months. And, and thank you for this comprehensive report and, and welcome officially, and we really appreciate that. I look forward to my upcoming meeting with you. And this is something I probably should know, and I was going to ask you this in our meeting, but an employee had asked me this, and I didn't know the answer. When it comes to our FCP, FCPS fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, how is the confidentiality of the caller maintained?
Why don't I start explaining, and then maybe Ms. Weatherman can give us some more background about how we actually do that to handle the call. So of course, when people caught in the fraud abuse hotline, we cannot actually see who, where the callers is coming from. So this number by itself, the 571-423-1333 number, when you call, I cannot see the ID. So unless, if, for example, if Teresa called the line and she's willing to tell me, disclose her identity, otherwise I won't be able to find that out. But as a forensic accountant that I did for training for my past career, I always I always encouraged, if people feel comfortable, to disclose who they are, where they're coming from. The reason why I'm saying that is because it helps, actually, when the internal investigation, when the internal review's done, we can get more relevant information, you know? And to do proper follow-up in order to, if we really have things that we should have done better, that then it helps you to get through the whole investigation in a more complete and thorough way. But I do understand the concern, because people definitely will have concern about, for example, their job stability. Will there be retaliation against me, right? So that's completely legitimate and understandable. However, I do want to add a caveat and a disclaimer, right? When the information is being, you know, sermoned by court, you know? And then there's really, as far as I understanding, we cannot really withhold information if the court is ordered for it. But I don't know if Ms. Weatherman, you have any other thoughts to add?
There's a couple of different ways that people get in contact with us. The telephone number is anonymous unless they leave us identifying information. We're also contacted by email, which is noted as not anonymous, as well as they call our main lines or they come visit us. In terms of the, keeping the anonymous component, we do what we can when possible. And I'll ask HR to chime in, because this actually has another component. For those cases that have come across our desks where we know who the caller is and we've needed identifying, we need additional information to do something. It's helpful to know who we're talking to. When it becomes something that is potential criminal in nature, and we're working very closely with the HR investigators, they need to know who we're talking to. And if it ends up being a police matter, the person may not be able to stay anonymous if we pursue. I don't know how HR, and I've worked with them so long, we've done a really good job of maintaining the anonymous nature of some of our employees. In fact, we had several convictions where the employee that brought it up didn't go anywhere. But if it had gone to a true trial, had they not pled guilty and just been done, that individual would have had to testify. So you can only remain anonymous so long, and it's gonna depend on the nature of the actual complaint, whether it's gonna be a crime or they're just calling to say, you know, they're using money wrong, would you go look at it? Do you have something to add, Mr. Ramey? Because I think that it's not a cut-and-dry answer.
Not really, I think that you captured it. We try to keep them anonymous as long as possible. And when we cannot keep them anonymous, pocket that information with as few people as possible, so it really becomes a need-to-know circumstance. But we only ask for the names from the audit office when we absolutely need it, depending on the nature of the allegation or where it might go, or if we feel like we'd prefer it out to somebody else. But it's really kept on a need-to-know basis in that regard.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Okay, any other board member, including Mr. Hale?
I have a comment, but no questions.
Sure, comment please.
There are some very good suggestions from the board members that might result in scope changes. Based on past history, I think it's very important that there's alignment on the scope before they begin to work, so there's not disappointment, and that's an efficient audit. So very good suggestions. I just encourage you to make sure you adapt those into the scope and get that approved upfront, so there's not a surprise. The second thing is, I would like to encourage the board to consider one other piece of audit work here. One of the things that I've tried to really do is bring, you know, industry best practices to the school board. And one of the things that I'm a firm believer in is that a leadership team like yourselves need to reinforce the tone from the top that you clearly show in your words with action. And one of the things I would highly recommend, and I do this within my company, is I submit my leadership committee to internal audits. It doesn't take a whole lot of time. I know you guys don't spend much money, but I would recommend that you ask the AG to develop an internal audit scope that does consider the school board. I think it sends a very good message, not to just the internal audit team, who is encouraged by that, but to all the stakeholders in the school community, whether it be the citizens, the students, the employees here within Fairfax County. Not only do you do an outstanding job of supporting the audit, but here you're displaying your confidence in them by your actions. So I would also encourage the board to consider adding that scope. It would not take a whole lot of time, but it would send a very strong and positive message to the stakeholders of the school system.
Okay, I have Ms. Corbin Sanders.
Mr. Hale, I always love listening to you, because you have very good insights. So I'm intrigued. I, as you know, we do have a relatively small budget. And so when you're looking at some sort of audit of the school, and I presume it's not only the school board, but the school leadership team, what are you looking for?
It should start with the school board as the superior level. With my company, I do two levels. So I would have to defer that to the AG. It can be as simple as a sample of expense reports, a sample of spending. And again, I know you don't spend a lot of money, but it's important that you demonstrate that confidence in the role by submitting yourself to the same thing you're asking of every single employee of the school system.
Are you done with Ms. Corbin Sanders?
No, I'm perfectly fine with that. I'm just trying to figure out, we really don't spend much.
Okay, so go ahead.
Well, just to follow on to Ms. Corbin Sanders, if we could get perhaps a suggested scope of what that would include, I think that that might answer the question a little bit more, because, you know, only thing I know about is expense accounts and...
I think that's a great idea.
So I mean, if we could have an opportunity to know what we're talking about, of course, you know, like I said, I'm still in my orientation, so please don't hold me to that.
Yeah, each school board member has $4,000 in their professional development account. So other than that, there isn't anything else that I can think of. I mean, travel, travel is out of that. And also, it's a mileage reimbursement is based upon the work we do. So anyway, suggestion has been made by Mr. Clay Hale about do something about school board office. But with that, if any board members wanna work with the Audit General to come up with a proposed scope, not just the school board, but anything else that wanna submit that as amendment to the proposal, please do that as soon as possible, so that we can also give some judicial thought and consideration before we make final decisions. Yes?
Mr. Moon, we actually did audit some school board-related expenses before, so Teresa can talk about that. And if you ask me kind of like what would be the scope look like, I think that in the audit priorities table, which is Appendix 1, there are two or three related topics already, if I may say a little bit about that. So one of which is about the travel, the non-local and local one, and we can definitely select some of the school board members' travel in that samples. That will be easy. Then the second one is about, I think, food that is not directly related to students or is it expenditures on food and facilities? That does not directly benefit the students? Maybe that is one of the area too. We can relate it to the related school board meetings, expenditures? And I'm just being creative and think about how the scope would be like. And then the third one is the, and but that topic needs to define more, is topic number 34 listed on Appendix 1, which is school board leadership. But that is more like, need to be further refined. Like, so what aspect of leadership or expenditures that we are looking at? But we do have two expenditures categories that we may be able to include school board-related expenses related to that. But maybe, Ms. Weatherman, you want to talk about the previous audits on school board-related expenditures?
The two audits that we've highlighted here would be all part of the sample process. We could stratify that sample. But in the past, and it's been probably six years ago since we've done that, if not seven, we actually did an audit, and it was specifically to look at procurement card expenditures or any, just like if we go to a school and we're gonna test their expenditures, we would look at expenditures on behalf of the school board, which are those that are occurring within the school board office as a whole, because all of your expenditures are captured under the school board office. So what would be any dollars or any expenses going or any funds expended, looking for the purpose and the documentation to support those, and were they within the parameters of our regulations and guidelines? Just like we audit other offices, and the same would be for leadership. It's the same type of audit we look at, we look for when we go to any department or school. We could look at your procurement card expenditures, your travel reimbursements, any dollars that have been expended, looking for the documentation and the rationale behind those expenditures. It's nothing outside of what we do on a daily basis with all of our other departments.
Okay, again, as I said, that if any board member has any amendment to propose, you know, please, you know, work with the Audit General and let, you know, share with the board members. I wanna correct myself, that individual board member's professional development account amount used to be $4,000 until last year, but I think that's been reduced due to the budget constraint. I forget the exact amount, whether it's a $2,500. Okay, so that's been reduced. And I believe that Mrs. Schultz has a comment?
Yeah, I just have a quick go back. I wanna be really cautious, and this is why I was asking about the contracts and procurement and the dollar values that we're talking about. You, I do not wanna get this audit function diverted into the mileage reimbursement or the food that's provided to school board members during meetings. That is so far afield and a $2.8 billion budget. And, you know, we've seen Montgomery County get in trouble with spending cards and all kinds of other things. That's all stuff that we already have in place. And we're now hardly even able to work out going to the Virginia School Board Association Conference and the National School Board Association Conference. And I never, I don't even remember voting for reducing our professional development that was required under Virginia state law. So what I don't wanna do is emphasize at all the wrong things to you to focus on and how much, you know, I honestly, we cannot be chasing after hay pennies. We've gotta focus on where the bulk of the money is spent and the bulk of the risk. That's the thing, you know? And I'm hoping that that's, you know, where the community support, both on the audit committee and off is, is where is the risk? And where are the dollars being spent? And, you know, how much, you know, the board spends on a sandwich for a 12-hour meeting, you know, that we're going into 1 o'clock in the morning and is not where there's risk and not where there is a potential financial gain for putting in more controls over the fact that we don't have any controls in the first place. I mean, we can't even host a community coffee and pay for it as school board members. I mean, we can do nothing. So I am extremely hesitant about even this making its way into something like an audit plan when there are very substantial, long-term, big-risk, big-dollar areas in our $2.8 billion budget that we need transparency on.
Any other board member with a question or comment? Ms. Clay?
Just to reinforce, I think Teresa's suggestion of, you know, looking at the school board spending in a very, you know, efficient way is something that is appropriate for the scope. I understand it's not a lot of money, it would not take a lot of time. But this is something that good companies and good audit functions do every year. It's a continuing thing, it's not a one-time thing. And the confidence that it can generate in the decisions and the ability of the school board, I think is significant and ought to be considered.
Okay, Mr. Hale, your points are well taken. Again, it will be up to our individual school board members to come up with amendment if they so desire and share with colleagues as soon as possible. With that, if there is no further question or comment, there doesn't seem to be any next step other than what I have just said about our amendment process. With that, this person is adjourned, we'll take a two-minute break.
There's one next step, which is to incorporate the recommendations made in the individual pieces, and they'll come back to the school board members to make sure that they're incorporated, right? Isn't that what you suggested?
Do you mind to recap? Sorry, I didn't quite get that next step.
Mr. Hale started his comments saying to the two of you that you've gotten a lot of feedback on this plan. And there are comments specifically in the procurement section and in the maintenance section that may need a little bit more granularity in your write-up. And so just incorporating the feedback into this prior to the adoption of the plan, so that when you present the audits, once they're done, there's less, there are no surprises, that people feel like the audits are focused in the way that they were asking about.
So specifically, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure I got the specifics so that I can implement the next steps. So...
You had specific comments over the scope of the procurement contracts audit and what that entailed. And so adding a bit more specificity on what that audit will be is one place where there might be a bit of a tweaking to the audit plan before it gets adopted. And then the second area was under the section on maintenance. There were some questions about how that would tie into future work on the capital improvement plan. And so it's capturing that language in the plan so that when you come back to us in five months, six months, or whenever, that you don't face some of the challenges that have occurred in the past where people go, "But that's not what I meant." And so this way, adding that clarity then gives you a clear roadmap going forward and also is a reminder to my colleagues around the table that this is what we agreed to.
Ms. Corbin Sanders, if I may, this is just a process that I suggest is, we have proposed FYI 18 audit plan as a new business, and that document's already posted on the board doc. So any change to that document should come as an amendment to the proposal. So I would suggest that if you're so inclined to work with Audit General, and if you believe there's some tweaking of the languages or some modification of, you know, a couple of audit items are needed, propose that.
Mr. Moon, I was trying to capture a comment that was made by Mr. Hale. That's the only reason I raised it. And so if you don't wanna do it, it's fine, I'm just trying to...
I just didn't see that as a consensus of the board members as an extra step. Okay, if you are able to put something up, whoever is suggesting as an extra step...
Well, I thought Ms. Schultz raised a concern regarding...
Okay, so we have that. As anything else, that if, please read that. If there's any other next step that you wanna suggest, please let us know what that is, so that we can go one by one and see whether there's a consensus.
I think the potential inclusion in any recommendations for outsourcing anything that we're currently doing in-house, but that would be, as a result, I don't know if that's incorporated into the audit plan, or I just wanted them to keep that in mind in terms of the ultimate recommendation... or I just wanted them to keep that in mind in terms of the ultimate recommendations that they may make to us. I don't know how you wish to interpret. I, I think I'm just asking them to interpret that as they go forward.
Sure. If we want to do an extra step, that has to come from a board member and we have to be able to write it out so that we can all see what that is and, and see whether there's a majority support of those steps. We have a one up there. I want everybody to read whether that captures.
I'm afraid I, I don't understand that bullet at all. I'm not sure what we're getting at or what we're trying to say.
This way, incorporate the comments received on the section. Find what section it is.
Section nine?
The section on.
The nine or eight?
How about incorporate the audits received or the comments during the meeting into the scope of the audit plan?
Thank you.
Well, but I, I don't, again, I don't know where that leaves us because we've had several comments. And what, what comments are we talking about? And if we haven't agreed as a board that we want.
Because if you talk about, if that has to be reflecting the scope of audit, the scope of audit has to be part of the audit plan, doesn't it?
Yes. So may, may I suggest, so for the procurement, I think is very broader. And then we will be looking the nuts and bows for the process from the beginning to the end anyway, that is in the scope. So it may be in a different way of how we would discuss here. But for the facility maintenance, I totally got the specific is that to link from the previous report that we have and then to see what are the, build upon that and then to see how we can make.
What potential impacts there are on the CIP.
On the current, yeah, on the CIP and then on the current audit. And that is very specific that I can very easily to work that into the scope for facilities maintenance. But I think for now, the procurement piece, if you ask me, I think is, is quite broad and capture most of the points already. And I remember what Ms. Schultz asked me is more like about looking at the potential impact of that when we come to the recommendations, I think. So does it make sense? There's more on, I think, facilities maintenance I need to strengthen.
Okay, following our normal process of deciding on the next step. Madam Clark, are you done with that particular next step?
On the procurement section, first one in the section is on the, second is the facilities.
Okay, let's give Madam Clark a time to finish out that sentence. So what's at, what is at the bottom? Is that part of that? Separate one, okay? So, so we have a two next, potential next steps. First one is incorporate the comments received during the meeting into the scope of the procurement section of the audit plan. Is that, is that what, what board member is, Mrs. Schultz, is that what you're advocating for?
I don't think that I have something that's per se next up. I, I think that I've provided.
Your suggestion.
I think I, and like you, Mr. Nakofek, I have not had my one-on-one with Audit Shop yet and Ms. Co. So I'm looking forward to that, but I, I think.
So is it fair to say that we can do away with the number one, the first one? That you, you might want to have your conversation with Audit General and share your thoughts? Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, we are done. Okay, we can delete that. How the facilities maintenance section would impact the CIP? Who's making that suggestion?
That's not quite how I.
Okay.
But what I would suggest it says in section three, facilities maintenance.
In section three, facilities maintenance?
Performance audit. The performance audit will take into account or provide recommendations on how facilities maintenance, or how facilities maintenance can inform the CIP process. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so in section three, facilities maintenance. Okay, I want board, board members, all board members, take a look at that. And if anybody has a question about what that is, because I'll be asking for your support or not support on that one as an extra step. Okay, not seeing any hand going up. All those in favor of that as a next step, raise your hand. One, two, that's majority. Okay, that will be the next step. Any other next step? If not, this section is adjourned. We'll take a two-minute break. Thank you.